Any public discussion? Okay, we're gonna drop down to Tom Aitken for an issue contract.
I'm here for our contract. We've got three copies. Appreciate you guys working with us and hopefully we're doing good work for the county.
You make it rain, it sure helps.
Want me to share my water? It's a big bottle.
That's my problem. I'm trying to breathe my water.
You got cups on your way.
Not my coffee.
Do you need it? Sarah, do you need it?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Because we have one.
I was saying I tried to breathe my coffee a minute ago.
It doesn't go down. Thank you very much. That's your pen. I still look at it. Yeah, it's out of your little cup thing, by the way.
Twelve eighteen. One coffee, I doubt in here. Run down and give me whiskey for the night. Nice down in your shirt, too, okay? If they're open. Knock out some. So I happen to put a coffee on my mouth. The dudes every year, don't we? Should've come ballgames Friday night, that rain was interesting. There were some people that pretty loud. Wasn't me.
Tommy, I know you'll send me one when it's signed, but will you make me a copy now just in case it gets lost on someone's signature that's signed? And you don't have to do it now, you just whenever you...
Don't move, we've just gone dry.
Sergeant.
Phone favor?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, darling.
You're welcome, Tommy.
Keep up the good work.
Is that me?
You're just saying that because your wife works out there.
He probably shouldn't stand for my vote.
Just a minute, I'm sorry, I was...
No, we didn't do nothing.
Okay. I thought you was waiting on me.
Johnny's here. Johnny, you're here for two things, aren't you?
No, he's abandoning her on the other end.
Don't move, we've just got to...
Second. Phone favor? Now I go down to the 911 board, right? Everybody's here for it now. Well, look at me, I don't move.
It's been requested that we give the 911 board the authority to operate.
Right. And she has been working on it.
These are copies of the bylaws. They still need to be edited.
She gave some to all you guys, too, right?
Anybody else want a copy? I'm running out of copies, but here you go.
Can I get one more?
I will, yes, sir. Colton and I worked, we worked, looked over and... We kind of collaborated last week and started to compile those. But they need to be edited and read and tweaked. Any piece that doesn't encompass the overall goal of the 911 board to be an active administrative board. So if, you know, anyone has any info or whatnot, come talk to Colton or I.
I'm sure you've got you a pretty good job.
Yeah, they are, it's mirrored, those bylaws are pretty much mirrored from Woods County's.
There's Kevin.
So there's some deviation in that. It doesn't pertain because they, theirs is organized a little bit different because they have inter-local agreements with other counties, so...
So we just need to show them everybody and get everybody's input as well.
Hopefully the goal would be to create a resolution to have it on next, you know, to approve them.
Do you want it next meeting or do I like do these?
We'd like that done before the next year.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry. It's been so warm, I forgot it's Christmas. And this, too.
I think that meeting will be the 27th, so... Okay, on it here it says annual budget. I don't know that it can be a budget, Kevin. There needs to be estimate of needs if you're gonna leave it like it is. Yeah, I think, again, that's, that's, that piece right there, that section is the biggest piece that needs to be revised. We need it for sure. That's pretty much copied from Woods County for RADA, but I know ours will deviate from that, but...
I mean, unless you take a partial portion of the sales tax and make a cash sales tax 911 account and then there, then you guys can do your own budget. But if you do it like it is right now, it needs to be estimate of needs because it is all budgeted accounts through County General.
Six point two doesn't need to be in there at all, I don't think.
I'm sorry, do what? I had got that for you. Yeah, then you need to revise your warrants and that stuff because, again, it all is county money. It has to go to the purchasing act then, so you guys just need to put on there what it needs to follow the purchasing act. I don't care if you guys approve them in your meeting and then they come here before payment, but if you're only having quarterly meetings, you're only paying quarterly and then you're gonna have some unhappy vendors, but it has to follow the purchasing act.
Even monthly, they'll be unhappy with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know you need places for, you guys need to sign it as, your board needs to sign it first and then it needs to come to these guys and you need to have appropriate places on both forms to sign and have a date.
We discussed that, too, on the going. They currently have monthly meetings and then on the quarterly, so...
But like I said, I'll hear you said that it has to be approved by you guys as officers.
Yeah.
Well, if you only meet once a year, you're gonna have some unhappy vendors. But it has to follow the purchasing act, no matter how you guys want to do your part.
Okay.
Does that mean they're still signing everything for them? And signing your paychecks, too?
Yeah.
We tried.
What?
We tried.
Can't re-putting anymore in the house, no matter.
The board would be created of officers titled chairman and secretary, if you really didn't detail there, to start out with, but not limited to just that, so officers could be appointed at times when needed or felt the need arises, but to start off, it would be chairman and secretary. So those would just be the two, so I'll...
And you know, on your first meeting, you, you all can't have the same length of terms because that's everybody coming off at one time and you don't want that. So you need to, the first year, you know, probably need to have one that has a five-year term, one that has a four-year term, one that has a three-year term, to kind of set it that way so then you don't have everybody coming off at one time and then, then they can fall into their five years.
They're set in there on two, two, two years and three, three years.
They can all be five years, but to begin with, you need to start them out at different, you know, so like if you have one that has a one-year term, they come off in December of eighteen, but if they're reappointed, then they're on there for five more years then. But it needs to come, it needs to stagger them to begin with and then they can go into five-year terms, but they need to be staggered at first.
On there, two, two-year term, two, the drawing of two, two members as two and then three and then the term of the year would be three and not, not five.
So you need to sit up, Tyler, you guys wouldn't want to do, just so you still want them all coming off at one time?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can stand here on that paragraph there, too.
I mean, I think the biggest thing is you gotta understand that we're not kicking rocks, we're just trying to make this work. I mean, I've been, I've been on this board since day one. Now, this last year, it's hard for me to make it because I've been working since the recession. I just started going out of town to work, so scheduling's there, but my heart's still here, you know? I want it to work, you know, I wanna, I want us to be as good as we can be for the county for, for the emergency management side of it, you know, I mean, and that's everybody. So that's, that's what, I hope everybody here understands that, you know, this isn't throwing rocks. This is like, help us, you know, there, I have a lot of frustration with this, a lot of frustration. Been doing this, I've dedicated a lot of hours to this, you know what I mean? And, and let my issues with the radio sit on the back burner because of trying to get dispatch and everything. Oh, except that's very important because I communicate to telephone, you know? But you know what I'm saying, I mean, we're here to just try to make things better. We're not, we're definitely, we're asking for your advice, we're asking for your help because you guys know the ins and outs of the county laws that we've got to do, we just...
Once you guys are completely done with this, you need to have the DA approve them also. And then on here where you're pushing your meetings, it says Alphach County Courthouse, they have to be posted. I don't care if you take them to the door, it has to be posted in my office. And I have to have your meeting schedule in my office also by December fifteenth. Just passed.
But you have, you have the current one, the way it is right now, don't you just?
I need 2018's meeting schedule in my office by December fifteenth. That's by statute.
Okay, I thought you had given that to you.
Well, yeah, I thought, I gave it to you at the last meeting.
Yes, and I was saying, I, yeah.
You're just saying recurring.
Recurring.
Recurring every year.
Has to be in there every year. And I have fire department members here, so why I'm also stating that, I need their meeting schedules.
Yours is already there, except mine.
Yeah.
And that's also in the open.
I have yours, I have yours.
Well, we're contemplating on changing our meeting order.
No. Does anybody make any action today on it? Just to sign 911 board, though.
I'm moving table lead to the next meeting to be reviewed.
I don't, I don't think you need a table, I think you just need it on the next agenda because there's nothing on here but 911 board. So next meeting, we need to have 911 bylaws on the agenda. You want it to be that next week?
Well, I'll hold them due to review, we accept them.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want 911 bylaws on there next week?
I don't know if the DA has to look at it or not.
Yes, the DA needs to look at it. They're our legal counsel.
It's pretty busy right now.
Supposedly Mitchell got the authority to do that.
Yeah, I need to go.
Being Chris is busy.
Brian and Mitchell.
Megan got the authority for it.
Yeah.
Megan can do it, yeah.
If you wanna go to the first man under Chris is Brian Mitchell.
Megan's pretty smart.
I guess I should look at it.
Better than you.
Again, we're not trying to cause any... For us, I mean, I know.
I want this for a Christmas present to you guys and we're out of time.
Well, what was your motion, Jane?
We may not make Christmas.
New Year's.
Take no action, I did.
There's, yeah, no action needs to be taken there.
We can table it, but...
We put it, he wanted to...
She said we don't need to.
Yeah, there's no, nothing 911 board on there, so we... Bylaws, we put on the agenda for next week, so you guys can review them and approve them.
I'll second it. Phone favor? Now, since Johnny's here, where would it say?
Morning, guys.
Good morning.
Fire Department is wanting to add on to our building. We, six, eight months ago, we needed the property over to County from the city and I'm here to get the plans and the bids, bid spec sheets. We'd like to submit that out for bids this morning.
I'll make it most of group. Phone favor?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the support you guys give the fire departments.
You guys want to look at the...
You want to look at anything?
Yeah, you do look at the specs, we'll have to spin off on the specs.
We can look at them.
We can look at them, but when you got the final plans or a contract, that's what's important.
Johnny's has everything right.
I got four plans, if you want to look at them. You got to clear the table.
Yeah.
I just need one of those copies to be dated and signed.
And I've got enough.
As far as I'm concerned, as long as you guys are satisfied and you're a fire...
Yes, yeah.
Your department, boy, that's what counts.
There is, we do have a permit from the Department of Transportation for the easement and it's, it's in there and there's specs to do the curb work and the driveway are in there also.
Is that because you're on highway, the highway?
We're on state highway, yes.
I'm just asking questions because we're wanting to, we finally got our requirements of our property to do a building, too, so...
The only reason we did that was because it's, it's on state highway.
Yeah. State highway, though, yeah.
Three hundred feet of frontage there, so...
I need one of those signed by all of you guys and dated. Who is the Oakwood Lane Incorporated? Who does that?
Say that again?
Who does the Oakwood Lane Incorporated? I don't know who it is. I was just curious.
Yeah, I do. Here's, here's four sets of plans.
You need to do that.
I need it.
She does, she needs it.
I need one of them.
Those are the bid packets.
Dated and signed by you guys, so I can put it in them, the package, just like we always do on space.
Who do we send them to?
He gave it to me.
I, I gave her a vendor.
Rigor welding, Oakwood Lane Incorporated out of area, and new build construction out of area.
Did you say Oakwood?
That's what I asked him, who the Oakwood Lane Incorporated out of area was. I was just curious.
Ashton Tyler. Where are they? We have run out of room. The trucks have gotten bigger and we have ten, ten foot, ten-foot doors.
It's on the spec that we always do.
Twenty years ago, it was perfect, but it's, we just outrun it and we're needing to expand some equipment.
They're adding on to theirs right now, so it's good.
Which way are we gonna go next, though?
Well, that's up to whoever.
We can't go west, though, more, can we?
Have to take out the storm shelter or go over the top of it.
Well, that's all right.
Build around it.
Yeah.
Mine won't go.
Shut off?
Is this on any meeting?
There's like four copies.
Well, it's one good problem to have, buildings not big enough and hell, you had to build another building. It was that, having nineteen forty trucks like I used to work on.
Well, the situation we're in right now is if, if we have a truck that goes out and it's out for a couple of days, it only leaves us one brush room. We're needing another truck pretty bad.
Understand that.
We put that out for, I put that out for four weeks, so close on the nineteenth of January, we're open on the twenty-second.
Now, did you give a list of bidders that you wanted to send to or...
We'll send it to bid news, so there may be some other ones that requested, we have to give it to them.
Right, right, but I didn't know how that, I'm trying to learn.
Is, is there, Toby, is there a way that we, when you guys open the bids, can you guys table that to the next meeting and then can I have copies of that to review with my guys?
Yes, yes.
We'll table it and you can take it back to your guys.
Okay.
Unless you...
And then I can get on the agenda for the next meeting and...
You can, you can be here that day and we open them.
You, you can, you can accept them that day if...
Well, yeah, I realize that, but I'm just, you know, it's not my, it's not my, it's everybody's.
Yeah, sure can, we sure can. Anything.
You know, so they tell me otherwise.
So are you, what about, are you, I didn't see any electrical or plumbing.
We're gonna have to go out for bids on electrical.
Later, please. Well, there's actual...
We're gonna have to go out on bids later for electrical.
Because that's what I was wondering about ours, you know, we, we, if that's all right to do that way to build the building, maybe, maybe stub the, what plumbing that we'd need in the ground, you know what I mean? But just get the building built and then use funds later to do the rest, is that okay?
They've done that before, yeah.
Do the shell and...
Yeah, just, just to...
We did fair value. We built the shell and...
Make sure you got the ground.
Bid the electrical and...
Yeah, we did, you did. It's all, we finally got it all that, because see, we had to get that one little piece of property and it's finally done, so now we're back to being able to do something, so...
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
You bet. Anything will help.
I will. I've already, I've already talked to him about needing some, but... Yeah. Yeah, thanks again.
You bet.
You're welcome, yeah.
We'll need to let me know if there's anything you need. Let me know, let me know when you guys...
I apologize.
Look to my friend Lee.
Sure good to see you, Rob.
Yeah, see you, Rob. I'll get him.
You're a troublemaker.
I know, I know.
Keep it behind, you're the only, you know, the, you need a bigger rack for a little...
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, darling.
Yes, sir.
See you, Paul.
Have a good day.
I feel like I'm the host, although I just shake your hand, you know, you're still my son's age.
Means you're getting older.
I know. I'm not supposed to get old. I know my kids are getting older, but nobody else's kids are supposed to get old.
And we did, ready, anyway. Let's put a rack somewhere, you reckon?
I would assume that, yeah.
So safety and standing boards, now, right?
There's a place here on the normal PO and then the normal place, just like payroll, there's two places assigned. And the back of that is just where you guys have signed off that you agree with what I was hanging up.
Where was yellow tab is?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kyle, it's pretty interesting Friday night.
How's the furniture, Ken?
Who are they playing? Girls won, boys lost?
They might be pretty matty.
I made most of the crew. Phone favor?
There's your leaderships and then 911 and then 911s. I did pull Thea's out, she was up here, she's gone for the rest of the time, so I did.
So you get your turn, okay.
I hope that was all right.
Yep. Now, it's like a purchaser, is it? It don't warrant, sorry.
And the warrant's fresh, I don't care.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
What's...
I just listened and see it.
Well, I already marked it, that's my problem.
Oh, sorry. Like passing football.
You guys can take a nap now.
We do have our magic markers ready in case you do go to sleep, though.
I think you bring coloring books?
I have some. I'm just messing.
There's no SpongeBob, sorry.
Little Safety Sam? Smokey Stewers?
There must be Safety Sam in those coloring books.
SpongeBob's creepy.
SpongeBob's creepy.
How to make the house safer?
Yeah, they're emergency management coloring book. I have some here. I do actually have some. Of what? Coloring books. They're for second and third graders.
Some like kids' Christmas pageant. So until Saturday, I could have distributed them for you. Covered out, well, maybe one-third. Baptist church has everybody in town. It's all wiring.
I know, we got too many powers. Where do you go?
First Baptist out. Predators, I'm just too big to become anything else. That's saying a lot of the other Catholic churches are pretty good.
Very first thing on Friday.
My gal said she's gonna do it Thursday.
Yeah, she said she'd do it Thursday.
About Lena, she knows that.
I, I told her and I think she's gonna do hers Thursday also, that's what she said.
Don't forget Friday deadlines.
Got my sticker on my desk.
Earlier the better.
Thursday, the earlier the better?
Earlier the better.
Oh, I'm trying, hoping I don't get minutes done for them today. I'm hoping, and I already sent her them.
You want to do minutes next week because if they don't approve them for some reason, it's gonna be Wednesday.
That's true, you're gonna probably want it.
We had Larkinville clean that sewer out, our sewer, that's it. Come out and clean it out.
That's true, probably better not.
You see how much it was, four and some dollars?
Yeah, it's had two weeks, the next week, then.
We rented this deal from Mazes, twenty bucks to her, so...
Notice for the bid. I think I sent it to her, but I can't remember. I've slept since the first week.
She's got office from, from her whole day, there's homework and I'm so I had to lock.
But Mazes has a hundred foot deal, my guys put it right in there and did it. Had to clean out in an hour.
Go play secretary.
It's twenty bucks, I'm glad.
I've all entered at one time.
Right.
Nine one one and I got ahold of a really mad mama and I was like, I thought you were from every year. I don't know why she's calling nine one one for that, but. She was not happy. So I was down by herself, the phone was ringing off the wall and she was on the phone, coming in and screaming and yelling.
It's, it's.
I mean, answer the phone down, it kind of.
It's automatic itself, yeah.
Oh, you got a light.
Nice to do that. I think it did.
Way early in the morning to a guy sitting in the house, holding their goat.
Holding their goat.
Pass out, holding their goat.
Oh my god.
He woke up and then was petting their dog. They took that guy to jail.
That was kinda scary, an electric going for twenty dollars, oh my lord.
Well, I think, well, I think, well, I guess there's an electric come up to ask him.
Zayden bought Jessica a Christmas present. It was an elephant necklace and he gave it to her yesterday. I thought he was gonna make Jessica cry, you should have seen it, it was just so bad.
Yeah, they were supposed to come last night, for her Christmas present. Cause the two grandkids were gonna be up there with my mom singing at the end.
Oh.
But I think my mom was wanting Trent to do it too, and Trent said that I really, they weren't really doing enough to it. Trent just didn't wanna do it.
And say, they were all feeling fine when they left the house.
I'll, I'll leave that part out, I won't tell.
You won't tell, yeah, don't tell your mom then.
Then I'll be very happy.
Kids don't eat. But she, I think she was feeling alright, she was. She went pop, and so I gave her pop, so it was probably my fault.
Probably. I'll tell mom that. Only me is fault.
I mean, I gave her pop. It's my job, it's my only thing I get to spoil them with on Sundays is pop.
Zayden really likes root beer.
Oh, does he really? Mom never buys root beer, I'll help you get root beer then.
Yeah, when we go out and he, when he's here, he wants root beer with her. He always forgets about it, and he'll, he'll say Sprite. Mom's like, do you want root beer?
Yeah. Yeah, cause it doesn't have caffeine in it, so it would be just like Sprite, but. My mom buys us Pepsi and Dr. Pepper. So I always ask them if they want red or blue.
That's what their secretary said, that was the last bid, it's like I'm on soft, last, last bill.
We can reopen them, but it's just kinda like an act of Congress.
Right, I know. I always thought Tommy Ford was laughing himself, and I should have known where he was coming, he must have been. Whatever, yeah, the secretary, yeah. She knew, she knew right away, she knew right away we'd done. So I kept him here and asking, see fire and safety water from stock tanks? Prayer book, ask Rob about that, that's what he'd said.
Do you have any blinds, Dan?
No. Need to get gear, you know. Usually through December, through February, I can kinda.
Not blind one?
A little cold up there?
Yeah, takes too long to warm it up.
That was screens to pull water from stock tanks. Just in case anybody else was wondering, yeah. You gotta read the whole thing, not just one line.
Yeah, you read the bottom.
I'm just working the water from the stock tank in the head.
You're talking about, no, it's, it was four screens, it was to pull water from stock.
Into the suction, you suck water out, you don't plug your pump in.
Cramps are okay, water in stock tanks, I'll write that.
Just in case they get thirsty.
Most refer to them as streamers. Now, Rob likes many hassles. That one's dead.
Let me throw it?
Yeah.
I didn't move around.
Check who it was?
Really have not moved much in the last forty-eight hours.
Rescue truck says, uh, that's probably right.
Yeah.
That's probably, I guess, about you.
Should have did that direction.
Combination, yes.
They might have.
I made it safely, the thought matters.
Depends what's, you know, how fast they get.
Kinda know what you're gonna show. So, it's just.
I'm stressing, I'm, I'm gripping it. Better I do it now when I'm younger, cause when I get older, I ain't doing this.
You're gonna be a tough son, about to get old, that's all I can tell you, and that Jay. The good die young, the good die young, and that pretty old Jay and I are gonna.
Right.
Wait till.
Couldn't live with it.
It takes more years or so.
Even when we were young, we had children, we didn't do trips like that.
Drinking moonshine up there?
What's that?
Drinking some moonshine up there?
I really, I wish that was moonshine, I don't know. I got some coffee flavored moonshine, it just.
That would be, that would, I don't think I could do that.
I wanted to buy a whole case and she was in no one bottles of Max.
I don't think I could do that.
Oh, it's just like drinking coffee and it's just a smell.
Is it?
Everybody comes to us, she says, here, try this. I said, no, we're giving that away, you only left me a one bottle.
Well, my, my boss owns a liquor store in Bellevue and they, uh, they sell moonshine, but it's like a kerosene looking can.
Wow, I was like, I should tell you, thank you.
Some of that tastes like kerosene.
Make you go blind.
I got a bottle of that for my brother about five years ago for Christmas. We still had the wood, wood burning fireplace, we had company over. Katie kept going in and this is on, you know, she'd get a mouthful, walk in and spit it on the fire. That was some.
Oh, that's a good one.
Couldn't drink it, but she'd spit it on the fire.
Maybe use some paint in there.
Still got it.
Maybe a little bit of half decent cheese in there.
How's that, of course?
Man, you're not supposed to sign any pub company. How come you're telling your wife, now I gotta tell you.
I signed it cause I like old Carl, he's such a good guy.
Man, they're all, they got a whole suite of blankets. So Cherokee potion coming, Jay.
Another one? Better check it over, it's probably padded.
Probably, given the need, they're probably cleaning each other off, ain't they?
Sure. Cause we're that close, aren't we, Kyle?
If I'm gonna cheat the county, I'm not gonna share the money. Are you thinking?
If you go to jail, you're gonna take the money yourself, aren't you?
Be long gone. Especially since I'm not the one that touched the bills.
Spread these blankets out.
Not kind of going there.
I don't even know what the bills are for, I don't even see them.
One's thirty-six dollars, how far can you get on that one?
Yeah. At the big Sonic.
What do you even throw on a gas tank?
One's a hundred or something like that.
I'm gonna run away to Carmen. South into Cherokee.
Put a wheel in the next car. There's a gap. There's a little blanket.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That's a big one.
Blanket, mom there.
Must be a good wrecked call for a second ambulance.
This is.
Large, you're big.
Headed over. Six twenty and Grady.
Six twenty and what?
Grady. The, that, that way they're at.
Fifth, Fifth Street's Greer.
So, uh. Six ten is?
Six ten is McWillie, yeah. Highway.
What's, what's this that runs through Cherokee?
Say about six hundred.
Six, that'd be two miles.
Nobody's sixteen, would it? McWillie's sixteen.
Be almost a church shot.
Yeah, it's one's like ninety-five, I don't know, so it'd be a mile west of McWillie then.
Yeah, six ten, it's a hundred, ten, nine.
East. So it'd be a mile east of, east of McWillie.
South.
Yeah, be one east. Be one east.
Five ninety, sixteen, six hundred, sixteen, sixteen. Twenties go that way.
Oh, I thought you said six, uh, I'm sorry, I thought you said six. Oh, six twenty, I thought you said six, six.
Six twenty and Grady.
That would be west.
Yeah.
I just have the six.
What's Cemetery Road?
Look, right here, right here, right here. Okay. Got a map. Grady is.
I told the Cemetery Road.
One is, uh.
Cemetery Road.
Two, one mile south Cemetery Road. And six ten is, that'd be six twenty. Be your.
Six ten. Yeah.
Two.
Six twenty and Grady.
Yeah, from Greer'd be.
Six twenty dirt road.
From Greer'd be one, two be Greer, which is right out here, Fifth Street'd be two miles south.
In your district.
And a mile.
That's Toby's district, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I.
I think.
Right on the edge.
Right.
Yeah, because I go over a mile that way.
You go a mile off the pavement, then I start there and then go north or something there.
Yeah, it's right in the middle.
Something damaging thing, I'm called over your head.
Call Toby. No, call me, Toby needs a break today.
Probably that team being bridge here, they're on the corner.
Probably pushing it out of a.
Next week, next week I'll have this crap called Toby. With Greg.
Yeah.
You guys will pass it around. It's going around, it's, I. I heard some people say they closed some schools in Texas, they completely down.
Set up schools up on the city already.
Yeah.
Did they? So, I mean, it's pretty bad.
Well, we're gonna close courthouse next week.
Christmas sprinkle.
Monday, Tuesday?
Wouldn't it all?
Christmas break soon.
Anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll close our office.
Some deep cleaning at the schools might help you.
All week, aren't you?
No?
Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday.
My kids made it to their dads, not being sick, so I'm a Halloween special. Happy about that.
They threw this back to me and really sore.
Is it? Nine times out of ten, it's time for them to go see their dad, by the time we get there, they've done.
Talk about basketball or had some type of virus, so.
Can they get, can you get them tickets, flight tickets back?
I wanna talk about it.
Not yet, they're still too young.
Where is?
They'll put them on the plane.
Yeah, but I'm, my, my girl's turned twelve, I don't need to buy that supervision.
Oh, really?
Ticket, so instead of buying it for three, once they turn twelve, we can just buy it for one. And you know the eight year old will be with the twelve year old, but he'll have a supervised ticket, so it'll be like all of them have a supervised ticket for the price of one. Now, and then it's the cost associated with flying, it's still cheaper to drive.
I don't know.
Maybe not convenient, but it's still technically cheaper to drive.
Uh, do you have a plane that can commute to California?
No.
Are you staying, are you willing to get to a plane with them?
It's a lot cheaper to fly commercial than ride with me.
I thought you were gonna offer it for free, I mean, we're.
Oh, yeah, I just said.
I go commercial a lot, cause I can't afford to fly myself.
I just need to get there on the, uh, on next Monday.
If you.
Waiting for Monday.
If you'd gone to Atlanta.
Yeah, I'd be the ball game.
If you'd gone to Atlanta, you needed to leave last week.
This is second airport that has.
Is that Georgia, no, you right?
Wouldn't that have missed?
Isn't this the second airport that has happened to you in the last week?
What?
Wasn't there another airport that?
I didn't know, I just saw one on the last night.
Lost electricity.
An aspire?
No, they just had a.
Left, lost their power.
Lost their power, eight hundred flights had turned away and.
Big for.
Oh my gosh, was in a mess, and then electricity was off for hours.
One of the biggest international airports.
Yeah, that'd be a real pleasant day to travel.
Which airport was this at?
Atlanta.
Oh, my god.
Main one.
When did this happen?
Yesterday.
Really?
Went off at like four o'clock in the afternoon, when the news was on, they were expecting to have it back on by ten or eleven o'clock or something. Airport was full of people, there's a hundred and some planes on tarmac, couldn't peel, couldn't unload. I mean.
How did they get the ones?
Those people had to save their heart out on their airplane for four hours.
Longer than that.
Oh, my gosh, they can't unload them? Oh, just because they can't, yeah.
Can't do nothing.
Not really the one that's driving through.
He thought they'd had backup generators.
I would think it was a little truck one that used.
You would think, that's not cool at all. Oh, that's, that's no fracking.
I'm not, you know, I'm getting, I don't like to fly commercial. I'll drive a long ways to stay out there.
What did you say five minutes ago?
I know, that's what I would.
I drive commercial before you drive it, before you fly himself.
I go commercial before I'll ride with me, but I'll drive before I go commercial.
I understand.
Not that I'm, not that I scare myself or anything, but.
Did they divert other, the planes that were landing to other airports?
Yeah, they had to.
They had to, yeah.
Grounded a lot of them.
They couldn't keep them in there.
Yeah, Atlanta's a major.
And the ones that were on the ground on the tarmac were sure wishing they'd got diverted to the airport.
The only good thing about those bigger airports is they're better to see.
Yeah, that'd be the worst part.
Yeah, but it's all electricity, I mean.
It, it's bad enough to be in an airport with ten million people, but sitting on an airplane for six hours.
Oh, they get the plane, the door open. I think there'd be a ma, a manual.
Airplane doors, oh yes, you can do all airplane doors, yeah.
Right, when you get in the airplane, they say who wants to sit by the doors, because you're responsible for the air.
Yeah, they should have been able to get those stairs over there and let them get out on the front, or get out.
Nope, not me.
I don't know.
I probably walked on the runway in order to get to a plane.
Might be a bit nicer in the plane than out in the airport.
I thought you knew them all loaded, they hadn't, they hadn't captured there, you know.
Here you go.
Hey, spray courthouse for pass. Maybe that's what's wrong with us.
And we're all three still alive.
They missed Toby.
They tried to kill him.
Well, I really laughed up this weekend, I think they sure probably got close.
Oh, lordy.
I'm literally shaking. I'll second.
All pay or? Now we got the blankets. Is that right?
I just found a little bit of vendors there, ambulance and jet, that's what I'm good.
This all goes together, Jay, this is yours, but there's, there's just one near.
You have one?
Okay. Ambulance. Pushed it out.
Oh, yeah. Now, this is for. This is for District Three, I was just. I signed it for Toby.
Alright.
So I thought, boy, I don't know about that.
Kind of reflect one in on. Kind of reflects one in on...
You tell them the ambulance is...
Anytime you send your P O, little sheet over for your utilities, it needs to be signed. Are any of our utility bills, our travel, it still has to have that requisitioning?
Okay.
Because it's, you have to have a requisition, the requisition, it has to be signed before you generate the P O. Our system won't allow us to do them. It generates the P O, and then it just places it signed, so it has to be signed for, before you put the P O on.
So, with the new, you have a new system now that changed that?
No, it's always been that way. I've told Kathy, and I thought she was doing it, and she had not been doing it, so you wanna see...
So when did you change it?
It's always should've been that way. That's why I'm making her go back to all your old ones that she keeps.
I remember distinctly being told when you all decided on the, the requisition request, that utilities and blankets did not have to have one.
They have to have them.
I already told right here on this table.
I do. Then, I guess if I changed it last week when I got the email from the auditorium, so...
That, that was the answer.
But I've always told Kathy to put in the requisitioning on those, I thought she was doing it until I pulled a couple.
So when we get, like, pioneer, my pioneer real thing, for example, when I get it in the mail, then I do the P O.
You do a requisition form for it.
That's the type of rescue.
The requisition, do it at that time when I get it in.
Did you get that, Lenny?
Yeah.
That one's yours. Right? Except responders now. Never County General.
And I don't care if you still do them on your little form, you know, that you type up for all of them, but it just needs to be signed.
Which means it will be done on a time basis.
You have ones that are already signed by him for your other ones. I don't know why you can't sign it ahead of time, just like you do. Not my rules, I'm just telling you what the auditor said, I can show you the email.
It seems like in the ear deals.
That's blankets, it's in the month.
We can't one time, but we gotta sign them all, or whatever, you know, that's in, in fiscal year dealing with. You drive out to LA, stuff that bad.
Twenty hour, no, it's more, about twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah.
Nineteen hours is what we, well, that's straight driving.
Nineteen hours to about Phoenix.
Better have some tickets.
If you want it, make it a pleasant...
You gotta keep your foot in.
At least allocate an hour, hour and a half to stop it.
It's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be a lot cheaper if Stan flew me for free than me drive.
I got a guy that'll take you out there.
When I meet their dad, they're like, so when did you leave? I'm like, I rolled down my driveway at six o'clock, he's like, okay, so you should be there in exactly ten hours, I'm like, yeah, in the perfect world, I'm gonna have to stop with three kids. And I can never go at the same time. And it's just a matter of how many times I'm gonna have to stop with us.
County Sheriff. Glad I read it, I'm very excited.
Yeah, I drove my car to San Antonio over Thanksgiving, and I burnt forty-seven gallons of gas on the round trip.
It's not bad.
And the gas is two sixty a gallon, or...
How fast were you driving?
And the airplane takes ninety gallon, at five dollars a gallon.
Make a motion approved?
So, for the same trip.
All favor? I gotta go, I sent her fifty bucks.
Yeah. I pushed them over on you. They're moving, they're moving east.
It's armor energy, and I've never heard of them. They're calling it, calling it the name of the well, Swordfish. I don't really get hunger for that on the deal, but off home for porn, I'm sure, that's where it's coming from. Well, really, the rig's gonna set in Major County, they're gonna drill in Alphafa County.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, 'cause I guess that lady that owns the ground in Alphafa County didn't, I don't know what she told them, but they, they were gonna call her again about, trying to put a pad on her bar.
Oh, that wasn't just talking about them?
Yeah. I don't want she, I don't know, Dave, they were not going to talk to her again. With this armor energy, I've never heard of them, so I don't know who, what, when, where they are.
Dewey County clerk got, that was Woodward County clerk's retirement thing, and she says they're still averaging thirty to forty people involved today.
Oh, really?
Oh, goodness.
Yeah.
Where is that at?
Dewey County.
Yeah, Dewey.
Woodward County wasn't out there, but they may have put notes up saying, just stuff saying that they're gonna have their retirement thing. Alexis County said they weren't busy.
No.
I'm making motion to accept.
Yeah, good.
All favor?
My stamp has so much nice ink on it.
My ink printed.
I had to go see somebody. It was pretty, well, you can see on your, on your, um, checks there, it was pretty faint.
All right, uh, point Mary Gap to him as board twenty eighteen. She's already on hearing.
Yes, she just renewed it, she came off this year, she was there one year now, she'll start her fifth year now.
I'll make the most of it.
All favor?
Aye. I finally woke up, early about half, about nine, ten, two to meeting.
You're like, I'm ready to take a nap again.
Let's leave it, it's to be our secretary today.
Burned by an extension due to holidays.
I don't know how you guys wanted to do it, I just printed the normal resolution with the blanks to see how...
Well, I suggested two weeks, I didn't think about, but it's not be enough.
I didn't either.
Gone, buddy.
It'll expire at midnight on the twenty, on Christmas Eve, the twenty...
Right.
The twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, I guess...
Well, we hear the twenty-seventh, right?
However you want it. If you do it in the twenty-sixth, it'll expire at midnight on twenty-sixth, instead of, so you just...
Do our kids any gap over there.
You can even, I would even just do it through the holidays.
I got a phone call there.
Next Monday. And just do it, and so do it through, all through the holiday, and just make it through December, January second.
Yeah, you can make it...
And you don't have to worry about it for any of them, but if you guys do it...
I mean, it can be, if you read the verbiage, it can be expired, or it can be taken away at any time, so... Um, if on the twenty-seventh, if we get thirteen inches of snow, then you guys can take it, we're not, we could always put it on that and continue it on the agenda.
Well, I'd take, I'd take.
Thirteen inches of snow?
I'd take two foot if it comes straight down.
Get the heck out of Dodge, you're gonna get thirteen inches of snow. I won't be able to go anywhere.
Come to my house, you'll be by yourself.
Yeah, I think my grandparents kinda want me to be there for Christmas.
Oh, yeah, I see where you're going now.
From what date to what date, though, guys?
Twenty-fifth through the whatever.
Do whatever we wanna do. Twenty-sixth till the next Monday, it'd be like the...
Be closed, I must say.
Well, it needs to go the twenty-fifth through wherever, like you said.
The twenty-fifth or through the twenty-seventh, or the twenty-fifth through the January second, yeah.
I'd take it to January second, we'd cancel it all. Anytime, also move, it'd be...
Well, yeah.
So we're doing the twenty-fifth through the second?
Yeah, twenty-fifth, December, guys.
That was your motion?
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
I'd go sleep, I'm only there before taking that. Somebody bring me dinner.
Have you come to be my secretary, then bring one still?
Sure, like meatloaf? Meatloaf sandwiches.
Every day?
Every day, cold.
You were gonna pay a dollar an hour, but now it's...
I was gonna do it for free, so see, I'm still ahead.
County pay for cremation of our resident expenses, you're precious, yeah.
We need to sign it, and it's just...
Yeah, make a motion approved?
Yeah, good.
Okay.
So what they normally do is cremate?
Yes.
Call Valerie or whatever.
Yeah, somebody go get Valerie, yeah. Yep. Wind would vary, and they cremated, but it's gonna, it's not gonna be as high as usual, 'cause somewhere they had some money bank part of it. Twenty-six hundred something this time. Huh?
How much does it cost?
It's usually eight hundred something, this one's. Six hundred and sixteen dollars.
I heard there was a bunch of fires out west this weekend. I'm not sure.
Better not be in Hartford County, they're in Boon Bay, unless it was accident.
Major County was putting, was emerging at this point, going to Burman.
Other, I'd give three counties now, I have Hartford and that one.
Toby.
Yeah, no, I've got the private...
Harper, Texas County...
Texas County, yeah.
Got the private, privacy, ask the access agreements? We're gonna be staying, right? Stewart. Grady.
And I didn't ride it on them like they had it, well, I really wanted to.
Place on farmer?
Place on my mother.
Hey there, guys.
We're not quite ready for you.
Oh, sorry.
We just wanted to have you...
You didn't, you didn't wanna wait on me, I understand.
I did not say that.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll do?
Yes.
All favor?